A very kind gesture recently, and it meant a lot to my family, and I just wanted to thank everybody here tonight for that gesture.
You're welcome. We're sorry for your loss.
Moving on, procedures for public participation. Those are on the inside cover of the blue sheet. Everyone will have a three-minute opportunity to address the board. On the first part of the meeting, we'll be on agenda items only, and at the end, it can be on what you would like to bring up. Having said that, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring to the board's attention on agenda items only from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Basil. Nice to see all of you. We have quite a bit of recognition for this evening. We'd like to start out with our high school student government. They will be receiving an award for a food contest. Mr. Perella, if you've come forward to take care of that, please.
Are we going to be loud?
No, go to the microphone, so everyone in the audience can hear you.
Okay, I think we have two members of the student government here tonight to receive the award. Basically, back in the beginning of November, SEDEXO ran a nationwide contest called the Healthy High School Challenge. And there were seventy-five high schools that participated in the contest. Daniel Boone, I didn't know what to expect after the first week, but ended up after the first week in sixth place, I believe, which is, I might have said that wrong. Basically, what the contest was, it was to promote healthy eating and character. So it highlighted some of the more healthy ingredients that we have. So those would be the ones that had lower sugar or added protein, things like that. And the students got points every time they purchased one of those items. The other part of it was for the meal participation. So every time a student purchased a reimbursable meal, which is assumed to be a healthier option than, let's say, a soft pizza and a bottle of water, maybe, they also received points. So we started off in seventh place and worked our way up into third place in the country out of seventy-five schools, which I thought was pretty good. I guess that means we're eating healthy, Dr. Daniel Boone. I wanted to do this contest because the prize for the winning school was cash that went directly to the student government of the high school. So it doesn't go to the food service account, it doesn't go into the general fund, it goes directly to the student government, and they can use it for whatever they want. So the third-place winner receives $2,000. So I have a real, a real check.
Wow.
For $2,000, I'm going to be a member of the school.
Congratulations. Thank you for rolling us in that type of program. I think it's great.
Yeah, take that to the big bank. Okay, our second award we'd like to recognize is I've received a letter from the college board, which honors Daniel Boone for its participation in the Advanced Placement Program. I'm going to like to read this letter into the minutes. Dear Superintendent Otto, we would like to congratulate your district on being a part of the Advanced Placement Program's Second Annual AP District Honor Roll. The AP District Honor Roll nationally recognizes and acknowledges your district's successes and efforts to expand AP access, performance, and commitment to increasing student achievement. This year, your district is one of only 367 districts that were selected in the United States and Canada. Daniel Boone Area School District was selected because it has opened AP classroom doors to a significantly broader pool of students while maintaining or improving the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams. Thank you for your support of the Advanced Placement Program and all you do to increase the college readiness of your students. We look forward to supporting your district's work around college readiness and advanced placement in the future. Congratulations again on this fine achievement. Best regards from a gentleman named Stephen Zori, the Educationer Manager of K-12 Services. And I would like to extend the thanks to the high school, the teachers and the students, who did a fine job to have Daniel Boone merit this recognition. So I'd like that to put into the minutes.
Absolutely.
Moving on, as you know, this month is School Board Recognition Month, and we do have a number of, as you know, the tradition in Daniel Boone is to reach school to make some sort of presentation to the board. We have a number of people lined up for that, but board members, you have at your table, tablet here in our appreciation, and also a certificate that comes to you from us. And I would like to read into the minutes this following resolution. Whereas the role of locally affected school officials has served the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and local communities in meeting the needs of public education since the passage of the Free School Act in 1834, and whereas these local boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems, and whereas locally-elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment, and whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system. Now be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association hereby proclaims the month of January as School Director Recognition Month in this Commonwealth, and further resolve that this proclamation be communicated to all school districts, school officials, and local communities in a planned program which brings visibility and awareness of the role of locally affected school officials to the citizenry of this Commonwealth. And that has been approved by the Pennsylvania School Board Association in November. So I just want to further comment on that. Thank you for all your service to the community. We're going to further recognize that with the students and different buildings. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Trainer to further. But ladies and gentlemen, you do have a nice, have a nice round of applause for our board members. Okay, Mrs. Trainer, we're going to continue our celebration here as we do here in Daniel Boone.
Okay, first, I'd like to echo the appreciation from Dr. Otto. Over many years that I've worked with a number of people on the board, I do know your time behind the scenes as well as your commitment to maintain programs, and we certainly have built programs in the school district over the years. So thank you for the time and for the dedication. We have representatives from each building here, as well as the Daniel Boone Education Association, to share their thoughts of appreciation. And so we'll start with Amity Primary Center, and Mrs. Massara is here on behalf of that building. Mrs. Massara, if you don't know in the audience, is the principal of Amity Primary Center.
On behalf of the students and faculty at Amity Primary, we'd like to thank you. And what we do best in the primary center is draw and color and paint, and surprisingly, we write, too. So I have some choice gems, words of wisdom, from the students of Amity Primary. I was going to share some with you, but I tabbed them instead. You'll be surprised at what they're thinking about as far as the board, school, and education. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Start-up collection here for you. Next, we have, Mrs. Torsche is going to introduce some students she has from Amity Primary Center, and Mrs. Torsche is the principal of Amity Primary. In honor of board appreciation, I'd like to present to you tonight our Amity Intermediate Center fifth-grade select band and chorus to do a number for you. Because you are so busy, you're tied up in so many meetings, you don't have the wonderful opportunity to see what our fifth graders are doing in their choral concerts, so we'll bring one to you. Mrs. Stoltzus and Mrs. Naefley are in charge here.
Go ahead, you can come in.
Thank you, boys and girls.
That's it?
Thank you, guys, so much. We really appreciate it. You guys did awesome.
Thank you.
I'm used to playing so late at night.
Continuing on with our buildings, unfortunately, Mrs. Kiesel had an emergency this afternoon and had to go home, so in her place, I have a certificate to read for you. And it reads, "In honor of her time and dedication to the students at the Daniel Boone Area School District, Birdsboro Elementary Center has made a donation in your name to the Children's Leukemia and Lymphoma Research Center." So on behalf of Birdsboro, thank you very much. Also, unfortunately, Mrs. Hefter, Principal of Monocacy Elementary Center, had, her grandmother passed away recently, and the funeral was today, so in her place, we have Mrs. Samuelson with us, and I'll ask her to join me at the podium. She's a librarian, and she will share with you recognition on behalf of Monocacy Elementary Center.
To quote Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and think critically. Intelligence plus character is the goal of true education." Thank you, school board members, for providing us with the opportunity to inspire and develop our youngest Daniel Boone district learners, who will continue to showcase and display their talents to our educational community. The faculty and staff of NEC are committed to student excellence as we provide each and every student with educational opportunities that allow all students to succeed to their greatest potential. On behalf of the faculty and staff at Monocacy, we'd like to thank you for being an inspiration to our community and for providing us with what we need to achieve our educational goals. One library book about an inspirational individual has been donated to the Monocacy Elementary Center Library in honor of each school board member. Thank you again for maintaining your vision and focus on our most important asset at Daniel Boone, our children.
Thank you.
On behalf of the middle school, I'm the Assistant Principal, Mr. Hurley.
On behalf of the faculty, staff, and administration of the middle school, I'd like to thank the school board for all the time and effort they put in on behalf of their students. In recognition of your effort, we'd like to make a $100 contribution to Mrs. Trainer's Codes for Kids program that goes to give coats to all the needy kids within our area.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bailey, who is Student Council Advisor, has two representatives who will represent the high school.
I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce my two student government members that we have here tonight. President Lauren Denberger, which you will be hearing from later on in this meeting under the Student Government Report. And I would also like to present Rhea Santos, who will be making the presentation to the board.
Hello. On behalf of the Daniel Boone High School, the students have donated $100 to the Berks County Codes for Kids also, in honor of the school board's service and dedication to the students, staff, and community of the Daniel Boone School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Brad Gross, who wears two hats, art teacher at Amity Intermediate Center, and tonight represents being president of the Daniel Boone Education Association.
In honor of your time and efforts, the Teachers Association has donated a portion of their dues to the Relay for Life, and that is a certificate to prove it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the recognition.
And again, just one more thank you again to the board members. The work's about to begin.
Okay, thank you all. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your donations. Moving on to number eight, routine approvals. It's recommended the Board of Directors approve the minutes for the December 19th and January 9th meetings. Do I have a motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Terry.
Do we have a second?
Any rule?
Okay. Scott, did you second that one?
Right.
Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Discussion?
Is there any discussion? Any amendments? Any questions?
Okay, I have a motion first, and Mr. Semenaro second, and Mr. Potts. Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Moving on to B, do I have a motion to accept the financial reports? Mr. Semenaro? Mr. Kurt's second. Any discussion? Were there any additional questions regarding the construction fund? I assume that Daniel, that pertains to the dollar figures that we're talking about. Done? Okay. Mr. McCullough, could we get a roll call vote, please?
First by Mr. Semenaro, second by Mr. Kurt. Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, and last but not least, C. It's recommended the Board of Directors approve payment of bills for the month of January as listed in the financial pocket. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Potts, Mr. Semenaro's second. Any discussion on the financial pocket? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
First by Mr. Potts, second by Mr. Semenaro. Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, moving on to nine, a presentation by board members. Mr. McCullough, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I do. I have a letter from December 15, 2011, from Dr. Gary Otto, Super Daniel Boone Area School District. Dear Dr. Otto, congratulations. The Daniel Boone Area School District has been assigned the following APC status for the 2011 school year made AYP. Pennsylvania files a single accountability system aligned with the Federal No Child Left Behind Act for all public schools and districts in the Commonwealth. The Pennsylvania Department of Education determined the district's AYP status after reviewing the 2010-2011 Pennsylvania System of School Assessment results, graduation rates, and attendance rates for the district. Please note that the District of Education continues to support your efforts and the work that you do every day helping students achieve higher levels. Thank you for your continued hard work and support of Pennsylvania's students. Sincerely, Caroline Demersky, Deputy Secretary Elementary and Secondary Education.
Great, thank you. That's it?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to BCIU, Mr. Kurt's?
All right. My first BCIU meeting was on Thursday. I'm not exactly sure how Mrs. Horsen did this in the past. I just received today a letter from the BCIU, a flyer explaining what went on at the meeting. I also have some prepared remarks that I took note at the meeting, so I'd like the opportunity to read them.
The board received, also received the flyer, so, but by all means, bring whatever you want to. It's not only for our benefit, for the public as well.
Okay. Well, let me start by saying that unlike school districts, the BCIU has over ninety budgets totaling over $190 million, and we have to approve those as a BCIU board. Local districts contribute less than 1% of that cost. The majority of it comes from federal sources and state sources. Act 102 of 1970 requires the IU to submit an annual budget to member of school districts for approval. This is the IU's mandated services budget. The amount of money that the, the amount of money the districts contribute to the IU this year has remained, is remaining the same as last year, has remained the same for previous years, so there will not be an increase in the amount that we are paying to the BCIU this year. DB's contribution to the budget is $37,799.19. The governor's budget freeze has led to a $100,000 reduction in the BCIU budgets, and they have cut back from within. At the beginning of the meeting, the board was given a presentation featuring the IU's new human resources portal, and that officially launched today. The portal allows district administrators to collaborate by sharing documents, calendars, and other information. I have a little flyer that I was providing at the meeting. If Dr. Otto or anybody else is interested in it, you can see me, and I'll let you look at that.
Sure.
Additionally, this portal allows administrators to search an online database of guest teachers, and it's searchable by qualifications and their primary subject area. So it is, it really cuts down on paperwork, and that'll cut down our cost for the IU. A few more things here. They really feature this portal for the board members to get a look at. I think it's important to bring to the district. It works much like BlazerNet. And then among routine approvals, the board approved four budgets, the general budget, Head Start 2012, Head Start Training, help to make full assistance, as well as the BCIU Mandarin Chinese language program. We also approved bids for coffee paper, food service paper products, and groceries. And then, of course, if anybody has any questions, they should feel free to contact me. I have a little bit of information here. The contributions of all county districts to the IU, along with federal sources, I believe, and state sources. So if you'd like to take a look at that, by all means, feel free, just come and ask me. But that concludes my first ever BCIU Board of Directors report.
Outstanding job. Moving on to BCTC.
Okay, we had, Mrs. Hamel and myself attended our BCTC orientation on January 12th. The next board meeting will be this coming Wednesday at the East Center at 7:00, if anyone would like to stop by. The other, the exciting news for the BCTC is tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the Schmidt Technology Center on the campus of Rack, it will be rolling out their newest addition to the technical academy. The business and information technology portion will now be rolled out. So I will be attending that ceremony, and I'll know Mrs. Hamel also is invited. She can make room in her calendar on senior day. So we'll both be there representing Daniel Boone for that. And that's, the BCTC also is in the midst of their budget. The preliminary budget was released. We have not acted on that, and that'll be up and coming. One thing had developed, Mr. Dr. Lees and Dr. Otto were able to get together and fix a date for a board meeting for Daniel Boone to have their board being at the East Center on April 23rd. So that's, looks like that's in the works. So again, the public is notified that we'll be, if everything's approved, we'll be having our meeting there. Also, Dr. Lees had a good idea that since we are going to have to approve the BCTC budget, and that meeting is a voting meeting, that it would be a good time as part of his deal for the dinner that we'll get when we're there. And is that if we have any questions for him directly from the public about some of the funding, how the costs, how it was calculated, that would be a good time for him to answer that, or any other questions that the board or the public would have. So that was another idea that he put forward. And I believe that's it.
Actually, that's, I had a question for you, and exactly how the funding is calculated from, for Daniel, but I noticed that our contribution is budgeted to go down this year from last year.
That's-
And it's been a downward trend. Obviously, our enrollment's been declining over the last five years as well, actually, last seven years as well, so-
What they're looking at is a, you actually get, proportionate shares is calculated by the number of students over the past three years, not including this year. So our actual proportionate share is up by a few percent of points, but with the elimination of the MAT program and the forlorn that they're referring, some of the costs have actually come down. So it looks like some of the cost for Daniel Boone will also come down. Not a lot of money, but it looks like there will be some savings.
Yeah. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Student Government Report.
Well, hello everyone, from the school board. My name's Lauren Decker, and I'm the President of Daniel Boone Student Government. Um, I would like to take this time to share with you all the impressive accomplishments our student body has achieved so far during this school year, starting with our own public student government, of course. We have just recently won third place in the Health and School Competition. As you guys know, we received two thousand dollars. We're hoping to use that money and give out five one hundred dollar scholarships at graduation for seniors, so it's nice. Um, one of our main focuses this year is to really get involved with our school's food program. Uh, we want kids to be allowed to come to us and make requests, and we're hoping to put up signs so they know, like, one is considered a meal, so it's easier, easier for the kids. Um, we also have helped plan our first outdoor pep rally in our new stadium, and it was really successful, and everyone liked it, so we got positive feedback, which is good. Um, we're also in the process of taking this club to the next level. Um, we're making major adjustments by meeting more often and having representation from every homeroom. We're hoping to accomplish this by, um, creating, like, committees that focus on the problems we have, like, for example, food committee, where those kids will focus on the problems there. And we're trying to make meetings during homeroom, so they're accessible by everyone, so like freshmen who can't get rides after school, or athletes. Um, our National Auto Society just recently inducted its new members. We have about thirty-five new inductees, which is a pretty big number, we're pretty proud of that. And recently, we also raised money through the month of December, and we put them together in gift cards to give to the media around the area. And the annual blood drive run by DBYA was a huge success this year once again. We collected the highest number of pints, so we're excited. And we also raised money for our fellow student Cory Mitchell, who is bravely fighting cancer. We collected donations and sold bandanas and T-shirts. DBYA is now getting ready for their cease production that they put off for the kids every year, and we're really excited about that. It's always our favorite thing to do. Um, Internet Club has reached out to the, oh, they're very recently, from local retirement home. We organized a launch-in, and they put on a show, and everybody who made the election. Um, and of course, to mention, uh, I don't know if you guys know the Mr. Boone pageant that we put on over here. We love that. Um, it was, it was a sold-out show, which was the first time ever, so we weren't selling at the door. We had about thousand and thirty, because we opened, um, our LGR room, so that was, the boys did great, and they all looked super impressed, so... As you can tell, our school has become really engaged in the community, planning more entertainment this year and getting more involved. Um, it's our club, the senior teachers, that have really allowed us to reach out and experience more of the just learning in the school. So, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Board members, any questions for our student government? We won't see them again until May. All right. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Sheehan isn't here, so we'll move beyond the legislative report. Any other reports from committees? Curriculum Instruction, Revenue Enhancement?
Revenue Enhancement. All right, I'm just gonna send that one. All right, the Revenue Enhancement Committee met for the first time with the new board numbers, and what we did was, we took up some, I think it was on January eighteenth, and what we did was, we looked back at some of the ideas that were proposed on November ninth, uh, two thousand and eleven. There was a recording of the meeting, and at the meeting was, um, a gentleman called Bob New, who came in from the Midland Consortium Education Foundation. And at the November ninth meeting, if you listened to it, he suggested that Daniel Boone set up a new foundation, um, that would be called the Daniel Boone Education Foundation, in which, once this is, uh, set up, it's a five oh one C three organization. The foundation will set up a separate board, of which would be about nine people. Um, one of those would have to be an educator, and within that board, they would then be able to take a lot of the projects that we're trying to increase revenue with, um, and actually maybe make it happen. Um, one of his big, uh, ideas, which some people from foundations may not be aware of, but there is a tax credit called the Education Improvement Tax Credit Program, which is EITC. And what it does is encourages large businesses to give out, um, up to three hundred thousand dollars to a school or a project for some type of, um, donation to a school. Um, these companies have to be approved, it's not just random.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
So, other projects that the, um, Revenue Enhancement Committee had been working on was the alumni donations, uh, adoptive program, we wanted to do special events, it was all of these things we had listed as something we would like to do, but we just didn't know how to get it, um, working. Um, this foundation would take over all of those responsibilities and make it happen. So there is a way for Daniel Boone to be a part of this, and there are steps in which Mr. New was suggesting that we take, uh, to start it. The quicker we start it, the more likely we're going to get our return very quickly from businesses that he already had on his list of approved providers. And, uh, what happens in a timely manner, I pulled up the application that businesses would have to fill out, and it's Education Improvement Tax Credit Program. The, the application is under some time restrictions, so we can't wait forever to fill this, have them fill these out and get our foundation going. All the paperwork that's needed to be done for Daniel Boone Education Foundation, Mr. New would be taking care of that. It wouldn't be like one of us trying to figure out how to do the paperwork. He said he could do the paperwork, he's, um, he sounded very good at it. If you want to listen to the November ninth recording of the meeting, it was very informative on what he could do. Um, I also looked up other references about him and what the Education Improvement Tax Credit Program is all about. There's an outline of how they get their money, how they, what the eligibility is, the terms. Um, they can't just get on this list and then not give. They have to get on the list and then give within sixty days, or in ninety days, tell why they didn't give. There has to be a reason why it didn't go through. Um, so there are, that is online. Also, other schools are doing it. The California Consortium of Education Foundation is also raising money this way, and what, what was suggested is, we take a program that we want to seek, and we take something that we felt passionate about, and we build a foundation to support that. We don't just put a foundation together and don't do anything. Like, if we want something to happen, give people a reason to give. If we want to keep our band program, make the foundation work, and have people donate to that band, family, band. They donate to the foundation, and we can earmark it for the band. So we can build up a foundation that will allow us to keep a lot of our activities that we're trying to curtail. So, um, as I read through, I just, I, I found other, um, from the Courier Express, and they showed how schools are making money through the foundation, and we're not talking, you know, fifty thousand dollars, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that are being put into the foundation on a yearly basis. One thing that I found interesting with the application, when they fill it out, they have to designate whether they're going to give one year, two years, or three years. They get a tax credit, um, increase if they give more than two years. So, it's, this is, I think, something that we need to really look at. Um, a recommendation from the Revenue Enhancement Committee was to go forward on looking at a new foundation. We can have Bob, uh, New come in again and talk at one of our board meetings, or at our Revenue Enhancement Committee meeting, which is in February, and get us more involved in how to make money. Um, and that was basically, basically it in a nutshell.
And our next meeting is the eighth of February. Next meeting, February eighth?
February eighth.
So if people want to attend to learn more about, uh, this idea that he got to working on now, they can come to the February eighth meeting. Will be my intention to extend an invitation. I do not know if Mr. New will be available February eighth, but we will certainly start tomorrow, uh, trying to get him to that next meeting.
I believe too, that he, what, what does Samel, what is the cost that he mentioned in November ninth that I attended that meeting?
All right, I thought you were there, I could hear your voice. Um, the cost in which he's suggesting New is, is kind of a loan. It's a payback on a loan. Uh, the loan which would come from, if we had any, if Daniel Boone School District had a fund of some sort for charitable contributions to, uh, to something, they could actually loan us the money to start the foundation. The cost could be anywhere from thirty-five thousand to fifty to start up. Um, the rate of return, but the way that he has this set up, which I like, because that kind of concerned me in the beginning, is that since it's, it's out of the loan, the person who takes care of the, the executive position, within what they're doing, they have to start paying back that loan, and every year they keep paying us back so that we end up getting that money back. So, within, they said, one to three years, that loan should be paid back and then some, so that we should have money already building in the foundation. We only need one foundation for Daniel Boone. Um, according to his notes, and according to what we have currently going on, is we have a foundation, um, Daniel Boone Community Foundation, but it's not producing what we would hope it would be producing and how it's being used for the school. This would have to be a new foundation.
That's right.
Um, and what they're stating, if you, if, if you remember from the meeting, is that the public record shows what the Daniel Boone Music Boosters make, and that in itself, if we could tack, I mean, all of that would go into that one foundation, rather than having all this split up. So it might be a way to...
I, I think, can I add a question?
Oh, absolutely.
I, I, I think, you know, we may be getting a little ahead of ourselves with, with, I mean, the, the boosters are their own entity, and, and they're doing their own thing, but the whole point of the conversation that we had, we brought Bob in, is that for a year, for two years of being on Revenue Enhancement Committee, we constantly, we're an incubator for ideas, we're, we're bringing up new ideas on how we could potentially save money or raise money, and a lot of great ideas come flying in and out of the committee, and we always seem to hit a brick wall when it comes to the who. And we look at Dr. Otter, and we say, well, who can you, who can you spare to help us execute on this great idea? And there's no one, and, uh...
Not, and I would add, not without effort. We've tried, like, with the alumni database.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we are, you, you've seen what we're going through with our budget, and there's, it's just, uh, no one has that time. Um, speaking with Mr. New, having him come in, he's familiar with setting up successful foundations, and gave us a few pointers on, on how he's done that and, and some of his practices, and his feeling was that there needs to be someone dedicated twenty to thirty hours a week.
He talked about an executive director.
Uh, to, to do that, that needs to come from the foundation. So, uh, the foundation is really the lifeblood for anything as far as Revenue Enhancement goes. That's really where we should look, um, for the who. And, uh, right now, the, the foundation is somewhat debunked, if you will, it doesn't, doesn't need anymore, I'm not familiar with any kind of activity that has gone on there, and his, uh, he has the ability, um, to come in and help revitalize that. Either work with what's existing and make it work, or start anew if need be, but to get it up and running. Um, and that commitment may be like a thirty-five to fifty thousand dollar commitment to get the person in place, his services. Um, you know, we estimate that if he were to get the, uh, the education tax credit going, there's, there's about twenty to twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars right there. So we're almost breaking even just by, uh, just by doing that, and, um, once that's going, then it's not the school board's responsibility or financial issue of the school board to continue to maintain that foundation. But it seems like, um, the obvious way to get it started, and to get it revitalized. So, uh, you know, we're, we're, again, we're trying to give it to you in a nutshell, but it is, he's got a, a tremendous track record. You may want to take a look at some of the documentation that we have here. Uh, I think if he meets with us again, he should probably meet with the full board, I don't know if another committee meeting is necessary. Um, and then, uh, you know, it's our plan at some point to make a recommendation to the Board that we, uh, we hire his services.
Would you guys be able to forward that information around to the Board after the meeting, then?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, that's a great report. Just, I want to add, one of the nice things, he is local, if you would consider Phoenixville local, it's not that far away. Anything, um, from any other committees? Does Meet and Discuss set up any meetings as of yet? Policy Committee is meeting...
Uh, one week from tonight, um, at the M.J. Building Board Room at seven PM, I think that's correct.
That's correct. Okay.
I'm thirty, hope to see a lot of people there.
All right. And, um, Finance Committee did not meet tonight, we had the budget workshop in lieu of that, and we will be scheduling a meeting later in the month. Um, is there anything from Curriculum and Instruction? Have you guys scheduled anything?
We have a meeting next month, actually, because we're kind of on that.
First Thursday? First Thursday of the month, okay. So we're back on our cycle. All right, and I guess we'll segue into number ten and Facilities. Anything from Buildings and Grounds or Facilities?
No, definitely, we're gonna be meeting in February, I think. Uh, the meeting location is pending, we'll get that out on the website.
Okay. And in light of our earlier discussion, we may want to take a serious look at how we want to structure that agenda, based on the discussions we had about the budget and Facilities. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, uh, if the Facilities Committee would take a look at that, I mean, that's the best place to start. I think it's good start. Start the homework. Um, on the agenda here, we have ten A, incorporation of IT issues. I think Mr. McCullough had reminded me that at one point we talked about how were we going to address IT concerns in the school district going forward, what's the proper format for that? And then collectively, as a Board, we decided in Facilities Committee was the best place to sort of talk about those issues. Um, we were putting together the committees, one of the things we had, I think as a Board also had, had talked about was having Mr. Semenaro involved when, when those IT conversations would come up, and, um, and Mr. Semenaro is not on the Facilities Committee, he's, that wasn't one of the things he wanted, had on his list of priorities in terms of selections, he had other, uh, things he wanted to be a part of. And so, um, I guess the question is really one is, as a Board, we're still going to discuss those IT issues at Facilities, and if something comes up, perhaps just alert Mr. Semenaro that...
I'm gonna pick you up, yeah? Just, just remember, you have five.
No, you have a...
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, my, again, I'm just reminding everybody, we threw that out there, we didn't want to form another committee, and I, if one person would like to step down, Mr. Semenaro, they'd like to switch committees, we can do that as a Board. I'm just reminding the Board, you know, we're not going to form another committee, and I, and I think we're expecting these needed, um, but, but just remember, if you have a committee meeting, be careful, if you're there, you have five people there.
Well, he could sit in the audience as a member of the public.
That's correct, but you can't, I mean, you can't, yeah. That's all, that's, again, this is a reminder.
The, um, the Chair of the Committee, is...
Mr. Potts?
Because the other thing is, I thought we'd have... Just send me an email on, on, uh, we have that great...
We're scheduled for, what, the fifth of February?
I'll make sure I send it to you.
Six.
Because I thought we were gonna maybe even have like an IT section and a building section in the same meeting, but whatever, again, I'm just reminding Board members, I think we should do that. Uh, it's a big part of our budget, and, and I think it's something we should talk about.
I'm sorry. Okay. Moving on to eleven A, Financial Approvals. Do I have a recommendation or a motion for one or more?
I move items A through H.
A through H.
Exactly.
Second.
Okay.
Representative...
Mr. Kurtz, and...
Uh, Mr. Semenaro.
I'm sorry.
I think I said first, but then off.
Okay, Mr. Semenaro is the second.
Whoever wants to take it.
Okay, any comment from Board members on A through H? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
All right, the first is from Mr. Kurtz, and the second from Mr. Semenaro. Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
I have a first for Mr. Kurtz and a second for Mr. Semenero. Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. Navakla?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Do we have a motion for I?
I?
Mr. Frank Semenero, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would like to say I intend to vote against item I. I know it's just preliminary, but I don't think a five percent tax rate should be in preliminary R.J. and I don't think it should be legal for exceptions. My team is a board member. I'm actually certain I'm ready to vote against number I.
Okay. And you're entitled to do that at any time, at any of these board meetings, okay? So, and I appreciate you expressing your opinion on that. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first for Mr. Semenero, a second for Mr. Potts. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
No.
Mr. McCullough, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, moving on to twelve. Do I have a motion for one or more of the following? Motion for A through C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Semenero is first. Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
First by Mr. Semenero, second by Mr. Potts. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, under thirteen, remember we have thirteen C as well. We have A, which is the High School Color Garden Percussion Ensemble to Wildwood, New Jersey. We have B to Trumbull, Connecticut. And then C is recommended that the Board of Directors approve the high school course of studies for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year.
Before motions made, I'd like to comment on item thirteen C. The Curriculum Instruction Committee...
I'm sorry, you can't do it.
We have to have a motion.
First and second first.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
So, do we have a motion for A, B, C, or all of this? One or...? Motion for?
For A through A and B.
For A and B, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Kurtz, you seconding it? Okay. Any comment?
This is on items A through B.
A and B, yeah. Okay, having seen none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a first for Mr. Wolf, a second for Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, moving on to thirteen C.
Now...
Need a motion?
I have a...
Can I ask a question?
No, no. Because my question is, if we have a motion to approve, we can comment on it. Can we make a motion to table and then comment on it?
There has to be a mo, there has to be, the main motion has to be on the table before you can make a motion.
Before you can make a motion. Okay, thank you.
Motion for C.
Got a motion for thirteen C. Do we have a second? Mr. Potts?
I have a question. At the Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting, the last one, we mentioned as a committee that we wanted the high school to go back and look at some of the requirements. We, they, we're talking about the waiver system and maybe a two percent buffer zone to get approvals movement to an AP or AP different level class. And it seemed to be the consensus of the committee at that time that we would approve the courses, but we wanted to go back and look at some of that. And we got the revised copy of the course selection book, but I think it would be good if we had the Curriculum Instruction Committee look at it again and approve it. I don't know if it's right to approve it now without the Curriculum Instruction Committee looking at it. I would, so I would like to make a motion to table item thirteen C.
I'd like to comment before that happens. We do need to get this in place to get the master schedule built, which honestly does have some implications for budgeting further along down the road as well. I, Mr. McComall, I don't know if you want to address some of these concerns. I'm not sure.
For, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know there was discussion about approving the courses. Just not everything in the course selection book, but approving the courses, so you could go forward with that schedule, but just making some alterations at next meeting. Does anybody else on the committee, does that sound familiar?
Why wasn't this discussed in the hall? Why wasn't, again, why wasn't this put on the committee hall?
I wouldn't, yeah.
I'm just asking. Was that committee, did that committee query, or are they ready to put this out?
Well, I remember, Mr. Sheen brought this up during the committee of the hall, because I remember the discussion regarding the waiver system, the two percent buffer. He went into some length discussing that. And then, I think as part of the packet, I had assumed, I didn't get through all ninety-seven pages myself, but I did get through about forty-something pages of it. I don't recall seeing the specific issue that you're bringing up at that point in time. It was my assumption from Mr. Sheen that it was ready to go.
I don't, I didn't get that assumption at all.
When's the deadline that you need to have this by? Mr. McComall?
Really, this is the deadline. In years past, we would have this approved in December. Due to doing it electronically, we moved it back to January. Starting now, if we get this approved, it will be done about mid-April. That's about, it takes about two and a half months. Once that happens, sectioning can be determined for each course, how many sections of various courses and who's teaching what. Now, the two percent waiver was included and forwarded to Mr. Sheen for all major subjects. It was adapted a little bit by the teachers. It's five department, for some departments. If a student is within two percent of an AP criteria or honors criteria, then they have to maybe answer a prompt and write it from English, for example, and then sending and receiving teacher evaluate that and determine if the student is capable, you know, of doing the AP work. The same is true in social studies for AP, US two, AP psychology. The waivers are in there, it's modified a little bit in that simply being within two percent, from our perspective, wasn't acceptable because then oftentimes, a student is pushed into it just taking it. We want the student to put forth some effort by demonstrating that through writing and answering a prompt or just explaining why they want to be in the AP or honors class when they didn't meet criteria that's been in existence for the past twenty to thirty years.
I'm going to interrupt here, sorry, Mr. McComall, but I understand we did assert that waiver for some areas. I glanced at it. I'm not opposing, I just continually press what I'm opposing. The idea that we just spring this on the board tonight and ask them to approve it, because I was expecting it to go back to Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting. I was expecting it to also go to the Committee of the Hall at least to discuss. I don't think it's right for us to approve this tonight. I'm not prepared to approve it tonight. I looked at it. I did not look at it in detail enough to judge it tonight. As a board member, I was expecting this to go back to the Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting. I know we discussed giving, go ahead, giving a grid life for those courses, but that waiver system, that two percent buffer, I think we wanted to look at a little bit more in the committee. I, was it there for science classes too? Because I saw it was there for history. I saw it was there for English. I didn't quite see, I didn't get to the science section. I guess it was there for that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in there for every major subject.
All right. Because I didn't get a chance to quite look at that. Could we take this back to committee and Committee of the Hall have a vote? Would that be enough time for me?
Well, I think the suggestion that is made, we could start, and then if we need to address the issue, we can always make exceptions for students later on if there's any changes that need to be done.
Is it just, for those of you that are, you're on the curriculum instruction, right? Who else is on the curriculum instruction?
Myself and Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. McLaughlin. So, was this the only issue that was something that needed to be reviewed in terms of the handbook?
This is a big issue of mine. I'm not sure. There might have been a...
Well, I'm just, is this the only issue? Or are there more issues regarding the handbook that need to be addressed? We could vote on everything but this specific issue.
I would recommend that.
I don't...
When is, we could vote on the curriculum. When is next curriculum committee?
Second Tuesday in the month? Is that the second Thursday?
Second, first Thursday.
First Thursday, so that'll be coming up.
Next week.
Before the Committee of the Hall meeting.
Right, that'd be the second, that'd be February second. Mr. McComall, could you live with that? Voting everything except for that one, you know, approving everything except for that one?
Yeah, we're fishing.
And then that night, that committee, if they're positive coming out of the committee, you could get an oral okay and put that on our next Committee of the Hall meeting?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
I think that's a good idea.
How's that? Then you'd have your final approval on the February thirteenth.
Okay.
Now, how would that motion work?
Well, yeah, there's a motion, I think.
There was a motion table, wasn't seconded, so the discussion continued. We would need a motion to amend. The main motion either by friendly motion by the, by Mr. Semenero, Mr. Potts, who made the motion seconded.
Do we have a, do we have a friendly motion to amend? Can someone make a friendly motion to amend?
A motion to amend based on the verbiage that we give.
So...
The verbiage would be...
The verbiage would be to exclude, we would approve the, the high school handbook with the exception of the, I'm assuming the waiver system and two percent buffer zone?
Yeah.
Further resolution.
Until that is decided at the February second Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting.
That does not impede the process of putting together the master schedule.
Okay.
That's a good compromise, I think.
Do we have a second to that amendment, Mr. Potts? Okay, any comment to that motion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, Mr. McCullough?
Okay, I have a first for Mr. Semenero, a second by Mr. Potts. Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, great. Moving on to policies. Fourteen A, it's recommended that the Board of Directors approve revised policy number three twenty. Does it, do we have a motion for A through C?
I'll make fourteen A through H.
At first readings, you don't have to vote. Yeah, first readings, we just acknowledge. Okay, do we have a second for A through C? Of course, I think I heard Mr. Wolf. Okay, any comment from board members? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
It is on A, fourteen A through C. Mr. Potts, first, Mr. Wolf, second. Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Fourteen D through H are first readings of policies three twenty-one, four twenty-three, five eighteen, three nineteen, and four twenty-one. Well, no, we're just, I'm just acknowledging that it's a first reading of those policies. Is there anything on the transportation?
Nothing.
Okay, under old business, I see we have update and record retention policy. I think we just have that on there as a tickler.
Take those to the Policy Committee.
Okay. And the posting in the meeting minutes, I thought we came to an agreement at the last meeting that we were going to use, we were going to make sure that the recordings were available for the Committee of the Hall and the voting committee meetings as an unofficial...
Yeah, I think you actually need to revise your policy, though.
We need to revise our policy to accommodate that.
And the other issue was, you were going to ask Mr. Zubers, if prior meetings that were recorded, did they have to have final board approval from all board members? In other words, could they're all recorded for a while before we post them on the internet? Do we have to have former board members' approval? No, I mean, the issue on the board minutes, the official board minutes as approved by the board will govern. Okay. I mean, they're, they're the official minutes. Okay. If you want to make available these recordings, that's at your discretion.
I think the other part of it was in committees, committees weren't taking formal minutes. They were, in terms of written minutes, we were recording them. So, all the recordings are out there, but there's no written minutes for those committee meetings. But the committee meetings haven't been released to the public, the recording committee meetings for our subcommittees.
I would say that the, again, making the recordings available would, would be acceptable to, would be within discretion. That doesn't necessarily make them formal minutes of anything.
Okay. So, we can make the minutes available to the public, the recorded minutes available to the public, and going forward, we're going to address the policy, the Policy Committee in terms of which are going to be the governing minutes, okay? All right.
So, we need to make sure we have record minutes for all committee meetings, or else we are...
Well, I mean, really, the committee minutes, all that's required is who's at attendance. Because there's no, there's no official action to... So, there's, it's really...
We're kind of going above and beyond right now.
I remember that discussion.
Okay, under new business, new business from board members?
We received curtailment information. We received that from Mr. Subers. I believe we should agree, does anyone approve them tonight, the PDE?
Okay, so, we have the three resolutions regarding, we're going to PDE for in terms of our budgeting for next year. We have K through five, class size, world language, and elementary band. So, you're making a motion to submit those three resolutions to PDE for their approval or disapproval? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any comment?
Just to stipulate, this is not going through with any of this.
These, yeah, these are just resolution, this resolution is authorizing the, was the first step in submitting these to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for review and approval. They'll be submitted by the district administration with an administrative recommendation. The board is not committed to altering the program, even if it is approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. This provides you the ability to alter the programs in the event that the district, the board decides to proceed with those alterations of program.
This is not, I want to be very clear, we are not doing anything, we're not limiting these programs or anything tonight. We are just, we are simply asking permission, if it is legal for us to do so, if we are able to, that is it. Nothing is being done tonight other than asking permission to keep all options on the table.
Okay. Everybody's clear on that? Any other discussions from board members?
Will we do that, or we, excuse me, will we hear back the PDE, Dr. Otto, in time? That's a tough question to answer, but...
Given that I don't have any sway over PDE, I would hesitate to respond. I can say that I don't even know if the same gentleman that I worked with last year when we went through this process is still heading up that office. If he is, I would say that I would have a better chance of giving you a, we would probably have a quicker turnaround time because he's, he and I are very familiar with each other. If that's a new person in that office and things have changed at the Department of Education, we could be looking at a longer time. We can stipulate in the letter that, and Mr. Subers and I have already talked about this, that we would like action as much as we can as a school district ASAP.
What was your last comment table, when we put in last year, about four months, five months?
I think there's a quicker turnaround now.
Yeah, I think they, what happened was, two years ago, the Department of Ed got caught off guard because all the districts across the state got hit with these, with the poor economy, and they started requesting these curtailments, and they quite frankly got flooded. I think they've learned how to deal with that issue now, and I, I think we could, and again, I don't want to bet any money on it, but I think we could get a quicker turnaround time than we did before. I think Mr. Subers was very helpful in that, in that we made a lot of direct phone calls, made extra mailings, and continued to ask them. I didn't want to get to the point of harassing them over it, but I, I don't think, I think they're beyond that now, so we'll see.
And these particular resolutions and proposed alterations to program don't raise novel issues. These are going to be issues that the Department of Education has seen before and has approved under similar circumstances.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
You might want to do each other's separate, maybe people have different opinions on each resolution.
That's not how the motion was made.
I'm sorry.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, I hear the first by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mrs. Hamlin. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, no?
Mr. Navakla?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, any other new business, board members?
I have a question. We are provided with information items on the agenda. I have a question and a review request. I think that we have our March twenty-two in Alvernia at Spring College there for a hundred and fifty students. My question is, is this paid for by students, or is this at a cost to the district? Along with, I would say, the Middle School Technologies Association going Quaker Town, three students. Is this paid for by students, transportation, all that, or is this at a cost to the district?
Let's get back to you on that one.
All right, thank you. As normally it says, it's paid for by students.
On this page, we generally don't, but we... On this page, we generally don't, but we can certainly-
I don't know if we should be approving a field trip to Alvernia for 150 kids, all the buses and-
Mr. McMillan, do you have a quick answer to that?
It's a college fair.
Do you have a quick answer to that? Is that paid for by the students?
No, this budget is for this year, next year it's not.
Okay, thank you.
The technology club has been pushing it all along to pay their own way.
Okay.
Okay, so some of the work paid for by students, some aren't, if we can just get that indicated in future of the regional level, she, I appreciate that.
That's the wish of the board, we can certainly do that. I think it's helpful. Okay, any other comments? Any other new gen items? Okay, any presentations by the public on issues?
This is all the issue.
You can state your name and your address, and then we're going to hold you to a three-minute commentary. Thank you.
My name is Janet Chapman, my home address?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. 319 West Stark Douglasville.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Otto's for board members and Dana Boone Community, I would like to address the board regarding the girls softball program in the Dana Boone Middle School. Last year, the middle school softball program had two teams due to the increased interest in softball, a varsity team and a JV team. We had one paid head coach and one paid assistant coach. One coach for varsity and one coach for JV, just like in baseball. Due to the cuts, all assistant coaches were eliminated. Not like the middle school softball team with one paid coach. We are hoping this is an oversight, if in the past the assistant coach was labeled a head coach, her position would not have been eliminated. With that said, we are asking to have that position during the state day.
Good evening, my name is Missy Bogach, my address is 15 Wall Street, Douglasville, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on softball. In the last four years, participation in the BAS record has grown from 70 girls to over 180 girls, created over 14 teams. Last year, a travel league was also created with a 12-team that allowed girls to play at a more competitive level than was often a just record level. This year, there are four teams, AP, 10U, 12U, and 14U. These girls have been at the middle school and was world five, you can see we have several of the girls that come up and show their support. They may challenge. Until last year, there was no second or JV team at the middle school level, the coaches recognized the desire and ability to form a second team, ended so utilizing the paid assistant coach with the athletic recruitment pool. Majority of the second teams games were played away, causing a minimal increase in quality, as the home team was worried for costing officials. With the budget difficulties last year, middle school athletics also paid assistant coach. What has created challenges is did not affect the ability of paid head coaches of same-sex sports to coach a JV and varsity game days, these games were played back-to-back. Softball and baseball are different stories, their teams cannot be played back, their games cannot be played back-to-back to the daylight restrictions and longer gate time play. Baseball has two teams with a paid head coach in each. We are asking for the same considerations we give the softball. Many of the field these girls reclaim, one are not in view of each other, and the ability of the paid coach to oversee both teams will be compromised. We ask that the board move swiftly in solving this issue as there are only two more softball meetings, or two more school board meetings before evaluations are beginning of the middle school softball season. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Shane Cockle, 830 Daggett Town Hall. I'd like to comment on 7B, your AP District Honorable Recognition. If you eliminate your middle school foreign language, you are eliminating your AP Level 5 Foreign Language courses, which would make it, make it actually a lot more difficult for students to place in your AP college courses. This is a great method for students, it helps them gain credits without actually paying for them when they get to the college level. And my second comment is, your field trip, if the, if the school board approved a football t-shirt budget of $582 this year, and a football, baseball hat budget of $367, then the school board shouldn't have a problem funding a field trip for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Dogg, appreciate it.
I wasn't criticizing the field trip, I just wanted to know it wasn't paid for by, I guess the board wasn't paid for by the students.
Okay.
Rich Martino, 325 West Ghost Drive, I was on April 10th, the last couple of meetings, I'm just curious, has that preliminary budget with the 5% tax increase been approved?
It was approved tonight.
I got here late and I missed that. Last year, through the whole budgetary process, I heard you, Mr. Beasley, and I heard Mr. Kurtz run on the platform of new tax increases, Mr. Beasley, I heard you talking about giving back to the community, and yet it seems like every year, the board comes out asking for more. I made this speech about four years ago, I'll make it again for the new members, I've worked many years managing and helping develop, ultimately develop budgets, I have friends that have MBAs, management degrees, and finance or accounts, that's neither here nor there, I've worked for a man for a lot of years, I had a very simple budgeting attitude, was that if you go into a grocery store with $40, you can only buy $40 worth of food. It seems like this school board goes into a year with $49 million that wants to spend 52. And I don't know how high you think you could raise the taxes in this community, but it has to stop. Now, last year, we came in with the same type of preliminary budget, and miraculously, meeting after meeting, found 200,000 here and 400,000 here, we're comparing ourselves in the back, and I'm curious why we don't do this kind of research before we come up with the scare tactic of a 5% tax increase? Why don't we look for these savings first?
Well, let me just try to address some of your questions and your comments. I agree with you, I, I'm not a proponent of increased taxes, and I think my record shows that on this board, but I also recognize that in terms of your analogy, I guess the only way I can describe that is if, if somebody was going into a store with $40, but they were forced to buy $52 worth of groceries because they're obligated to, because of the contract, then they have to figure out some way to make that work. It's, a lot of our budget, as you may have seen in previous presentations, is contractual. We have $7 million of debt, which is about 13, 14% of our budget, we have $35 million of salaries and benefit obligations, which are all contractual, which are, at this point, 63% of our budget, so now we're at 78% of our budget, and we haven't even gotten to paying for the electric and, and the power in our building, so that's another $3 million, then we have transportation, and so on and so forth. So what happens during these budget discussions is we get down to the, the things that we can control, and those are the things we end up talking about, and how do we pay for those things? And one of the few levers that are available to a school district are taxes, that's one of them. The other one is activity fees or cutting programming, and we have to be very careful about how we go about cutting the programming. There are contractual obligations in common law that dictates what can and can't go in and what order. So it's a balancing act, and I think we try to do the best that we can to get there. I think what the board was doing a month ago, when the preliminary budget was brought to our attention, was that we wanted to leave all options on the table going forward, so that in April or May, should, let me just put it to you this way, and I'm going to speak for myself at this point, and let the board opine on their own. Our contractual obligations are moving at a rate that exceeds our ability to cover with taxes alone. So if left to just, if our budget just would move on its own, just based on contractual obligations, we can't raise taxes fast enough to cover those additional costs. So the question comes up, how do we, how do we get there? You know, what we're left with is fund balance, we're left with alternative sources of revenue that we're trying to generate, and we're left with cutting programming. And that's pretty much it. Last year, we were able to sit down with our contractual partners and negotiate some concessions that brought that gap together, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to do the same going forward. But I think it would, it would be irresponsible for us as a board to find out in May that we were unable to make some sort of, have some successful negotiations that would lead to balancing that gap. So we're left with some pretty poor choices, taxes, programming, cutting programming, or finding alternative ways of raising revenue. Those are the three things that are within our control, and so therefore, we have to work on those three things now, so we have those levers to pull in May, should other things not work out. That's the best way I can kind of explain it to you. In terms of the budget, you asked the question, why don't we address these things earlier, as opposed to later? The board, the administration doesn't begin gathering their data until October, they can't provide that data to the board for its consideration until sometime after that. We tried to get a meeting and discuss it in the Finance Committee in October, but frankly, November was the first time we were really able to have all that data in front of us, and the first thing we did was take a look at what were our actual expenses last year versus our budget, and what were the variances, and can we explain those variances? And were those areas of opportunity to go back and look for savings, or do we go over budget and those areas that we needed to account for going forward by increasing those budget line items? So as a committee, we definitely looked at that, and we provided that information to the board, I believe in November, and again in December. We're going to continue to do that process as we move forward, but the state requires that we provide a preliminary budget, and this year, that timetable was actually moved forward on us due to the primary elections that come up this spring. I hope I answered your question on that.
You may answer, the only contradiction I have, disagreeing on having your answer, is these contractual obligations were agreed to by a board.
That's true.
Not knowing where the money was coming from, except in the taxpayers of this community. And I realize you can't go back and change those contractual obligations, but moving forward, when these contracts come up again, I think that's when you need to take a hard look at what you're spending or agreeing to. And as far as cutting programs, I also continue to look at class size. And I think the teachers at this state have sold school boards of bill of goods that says we have to only have 20 kids in a class or we can't teach. I really think, I went to school in an era where there were a lot more than 20 in a class, and we got a damn good education, I think you could do that again.
That was something that we discussed in the Budget Committee meeting prior to this, Ms. Trainer brought to our attention that obviously our schools have a physical limitation or constraint within the classroom, you can only fit X number of desks into a classroom, and so that's the first constraint that we deal with. And working backwards from there, we are looking at increased class sizes, and a proposal was made to eliminate, I believe, four teaching positions to start from second grade up, to increase the class sizes into something that was manageable, I believe in the low, low to mid twenties, as opposed to, I think she also mentioned, if she would go to additional sections, we'd see those numbers jump into the thirties or forties for some classrooms. So it is something that's being looked at in the end of February, beginning of March, she's going to come back to us when she has a better ideas of what enrollment may be for K through 1, and there may be other opportunities to increase class sizes there and eliminate sections, and therefore save some additional costs.
Mr. Martino, I'd like to say a few things, we talk about government overreach, and there is a lot of government overreach when it comes to the state telling us how many kids we can put in a classroom. We were told by the state, you cannot put more kids in a classroom than a certain limit, so we don't even have control over that as a board, it's pretty sad how little we have control over how much the state tells us we have to do, and then of course, not giving us all the resources we need to do it. I do agree with you when it comes to taxes, and I did vote against the resolution tonight, and there was a, at a previous, at the Committee of Hall meeting, I believe, or last voting meeting, we actually discussed limiting the tax increase to the index, and that, I motioned the resolution and received two votes. Yeah, we, it was tough, and I, I go around downtown, I see all four closed homes, and people are hurting, and I think this board needs to remember that, too. It will hurt making program cuts, but it also hurts losing your home, and that between medications and paying your property tax bill. I agree with you, and really, the whole system, the property tax system, I believe is wrong, I think most of the board believes it's wrong. Hopefully, that will be changed soon. I know the taxpayers were just spearheading a movement to do that, but really, the whole system needs to be changed. It's really sad how little local control we do have. I just want to respond to a few of your concerns, I hope I can provide a little bit of things to you.
Thank you both for your answers.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Laura Green, 367 Buckhead, I wanted to address some of the softball question, too. Part of the request for having a second coach brought in for the softball team comes under the foundation of the Title IX federal law, that says that Title IX, when applied to athletics, guarantees female and male students, one, nondiscriminatory opportunities to participate in athletics, two, equal treatment and same benefits, and three, equal athletic scholarship money. Obviously, for a public school, there is no scholarship money, that does not apply to us. We are looking at this under the number two, equal treatment and same benefits, and in the Guide to Gender Equity and Athletics in Pennsylvania Schools published by the Women's Law Project, there is a section specifically on coaching that says male and female athletes must receive the same benefits and services from the school in all areas of athletics. the same benefits and services from the school in all areas of athletics, it must extend to equipment and supplies, game and practice schedules, travel and per diem expenses allowances, coaching, locker rooms, and practice facilities, continues to list other items that it must be equal, one of the guidelines that it has is a checklist, specifically mentions baseball and softball, it asks to find out if female students have equal access to coaching by comparing the numbers, are the numbers of coaches, head, assistant, volunteer, and student coaches for comparable sports, such as softball and baseball, equal, once again, baseball has a head coach for their eighth grade team, their varsity team, whatever it's labeled, and they have a head coach for their seventh grade, their JV, their pony team, we are asking for the same consideration in the softball world, whoever you label it, varsity, JV, seventh grade, eighth grade, varsity, pony, we are asking for the same equal benefits that should be afforded to us under Title IX, thank you.
Thank you, if you want to address the Title IX issue.
If you want, um, I just wanted to comment that with respect to the Title IX standards, it, it's a little bit, it's a complicated analysis.
Absolutely.
And that, uh, the Office for Civil Rights, which is the federal agency responsible for enforcement, has indicated that with respect to the enforcement standards, you consider the total participation opportunities for each gender by, by, in this instance, a school district's athletic program, rather than individual programs, and that, um, there's a three-pronged test for whether or not the district is providing equal opportunities, uh, based on gender.
From my understanding, that three-pronged test specifically deals with the nondiscriminatory opportunities to participate in athletics, and that is not what we are arguing, we're arguing that we are not given equal treatment and same benefits.
Well, we'll take that, uh, you know, as, as the school district's legal representative, I'll take that under advisement and, and review that further.
And I point out just what's happening in Springfield, they are, Springfield School District is currently having to put in lighting at their softball fields, because there is lighting available for the baseball field, there are other districts that have had to do work on their softball fields over a scoreboard, um, it can get really nitty-gritty, all we want is a coach to coach our girls, we have a large group moving up, and we just feel that they deserve the same equal treatment that the boys in our school did.
Okay, thank you. I did ask you to comment, if you wanted to comment on any of this, while people appear. No?
Eric Toffel, on thirty-three, Springfield. There were a lot of discussion tonight about transizers, state telling us what our transizer's gotta be, maybe that's because the state is concerned about the safety and well-being of our students, fire, the fire codes, and the block out there, to keep our children safe, and now, as far as our teachers having this, I guess we wanna use the term racket, uh, having us sort of like it over, so, or she'd say, hey, we don't wanna teach our little kids, we want an easier day, now, they want to see our children come out of here with the best education they can have, and I don't think they're gonna really get it if you're gonna put them in a, in a, uh, auditorium and teach, teach them like college, you're at the, you're at the nitty-gritty here, you're bringing them up, it's not a college here, it's not, you know, if you can even get one-on-one, this even better, let alone, you know, fifty of the classes, sixty of classes, you're, you're really, you're really defying the whole cause of the education here by doing that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? Hey, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much. Okay, we have an executive...